Hi, everybody. Welcome to the 21st of May edition of the Town of Canterbury, New York Planning Board. We'll start with two items on the agenda tonight, two applications. Both of them, initial reviews. We'll start with an attendance. We have five members on the board and all five are here this evening, so full complement. Fellow members, did you get a chance to look at the minutes that Tricia put out?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve the minutes.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? I will say, I sent a note to Tricia of a minor, minor typo. And she said she would get that in there before it was posted. We'll start with the first item that's on the agenda. We have it identified as item 250501. The application is for 8 Langsford Road.
Is this on? Yeah.
It's kind of quiet, though.
That might be me.
Oh, perfect.
I'm Kristy Kenny from KW Architects. I'm here with David Betz. He's the owner of 8 Langsford Road. You may be familiar with the building. It's the red barn at the end of Langsford Road. We're here for a very minor change to an approved Planning Board decision that took place in 1999. In 1999, the project was changed from a residential barn to a mixed-use retail and warehouse space. The existing site plan has three parking spaces in the back and two parking spaces, including one ADA parking space in front. Originally, the retail space was 600 square feet. And we are requesting an amendment to change the retail to 800 square feet and take 200 square feet out of the warehouse space. The, we're not changing the building footprint at all. We're leaving the front parking spaces as is. In 1999, there did not appear to be specific parking requirements for the uses. But the findings of facts show that what was approved was the five spaces. Currently, for 800 square feet of retail and the remainder of the warehouse, we will need seven spaces. So what we have suggested is taking the three spaces in the back, rotating the parking slightly, so we get five spaces in the back. We have no net increase in impervious. We're going to be swapping some impervious from one side to the other. We have asked for several waivers. In 1999, the parking spaces that were approved are eight feet by, nine feet by 18 feet. And we also have a reduction in the driveway instead of a 20-feet-wide. I think we're at 18-something. It's on the drawing. That was all approved in 1999. So we're requesting the same space sizes. We're not changing the lighting. We're not changing the entranceway. We're not changing the ADA ramp or any of that. So it's a very minor change. So I can take any questions?
We just start at the far end of the board. Joe?
No.
No questions?
No questions.
Peter?
The question I had was about, was the nine-foot-wide parking space, did that require variance or approval of the board at the time?
It's a good question. I'm not sure if the parking requirement at the time was 10 by 20. But 9 by 18 was what was approved in the findings of fact.
No, it was very specific.
What else, Peter?
And they're proposed to remain at nine feet in the back.
Yeah, it's very tight back there. We would be pushing into the stormwater retention pond if we made those spaces wider.
Yeah, don't do that.
Yeah, I don't really want to.
It looked like that last space would have a tough time potentially backing out and getting out, at least frontways.
Yeah, it's tight, very tight back there. But it's, it's not that different than what is there existing. If you can see, there's, it's a slightly different backup, but...
And the standard for an 800-square-foot retail space is seven?
Right now, current day parking standards require seven spaces.
No further questions? Mike?
I'm trying to find the letter to the board because I had a question I didn't understand on that. I can't sign. It had to do with, Nadia, there was something about the 20-foot space in the front that I wasn't quite sure I understood.
Like the lot line setback?
Is that, if it was lot line, but it wasn't worded that way, I didn't think.
The, the only issue, the only issue I had, the only comment was about the parking. And a minor comment about the trees, but that's...
Mike, you looking for that? Is that what you're looking for? There, I didn't highlight the paragraph, but I'm just saying, is that, is that the document you were looking for?
Yeah, this is the document.
Okay.
But there was one or the other. Yeah, the minimum, it's on the bottom of nine, the last part of the comment on nine. The minimum size for parking space, I understand that. And the minimum travel width for a two-way traffic is 20 feet. Where was there two-way traffic except on the highway?
In, in the...
The driveway, basically.
Getting it out of the parking lot.
So that's, that's in your parking standards in chapter 24.
It is signage marking.
So, but I'm trying to figure out where the 20 feet in and out here?
There's a dimension...
Goes on to the road or where?
It's adjacent to the building, the length of the building.
So it's coming on here, going all the way down here needs to be 20 feet wide?
It's, yes, that's what's in the standards.
Okay, so the 20 feet that you're talking about was this hole to be able to drive in all the way around and get in here. It has to be two-way?
That's correct.
And, and we have 18 feet and that was approved in 1999 as a two-way?
Yeah, the building hasn't moved and the road hasn't moved.
Not in like 100 years.
Okay, I think I understand everything. I'm good.
There's, it says there's no change to the impervious surface area and there isn't.
No, we're swapping.
Just swapping.
Yeah.
It's an equal swap. You're just rearranging what you've got so that you can adapt to those spaces.
Exactly.
And you're going to move a wall for the retail space?
Oh, in the inside, yeah. We're not even really moving the wall. We're, because there's a vestibule and we're going to make that part a retail.
Okey-dokey. Thank you.
I have several questions. First one's probably a nit, but, but I'm looking at the project narrative, your, your opening page. And it says, "A minor revision, a minor revision to a previously approved subdivision."
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, sorry, that's my, it should be Planning Board approval or findings of fact.
Application or whatever. Yeah, okay, yeah. That, that's fine. Just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something fundamental.
No, you're correct.
Talk, talk to me a little more about the, this revision results in a requirement for two additional parking spaces. Can, can you, again, tell me how that comes to best? You're saying today, 600 feet would require five parking spaces, but 800 feet would require seven?
Seven.
Is that, is that, okay.
I actually had a question about that, too. I'm, I'm looking at our, our standards right now.
Yes.
And by, by my math, I don't think you should need seven unless you have three warehouse employees on a regular day. So are...
I like your math. We did meet with Galen and reviewed it.
And he said, and he said seven?
He did, but...
Can we just go through it carefully? Because this is going to be a critical issue. Let's make sure the board understands it.
And I'll certainly check in with Galen. If he said that, then I, I trust that he also was, was looking at something.
This is an initial review tonight. We're not going to make a decision one way or the other.
So this is, this is what I'm seeing.
Yes.
For commercial centers, commercial complexes, retail businesses, and chipp chandleries, which I think that's the category that this would fall under personally. Is that, would you agree, as a retail business?
Retail business.
Retail.
To retail business.
Retail, yes.
One space per 200 square feet of floor area.
Yes.
Used for retail area, so that would be four spaces.
Yeah.
And then you also have a warehouse use, warehouses and wholesaling operations. One space per employee based on the largest number of employees at any time.
So where Galen corrected us when we met was the retail space is one per 200 plus one employee?
Yeah, so one space for every two, yes. And then additionally, one space for every two employees on the largest shift shall be provided in addition to the above requirements. Unless these requirements reference the number of employees.
Let me see if I...
You've got four.
Four for retail plus...
Five, including employee, and one more for a warehouse employee.
Two, we have two employees in a warehouse.
Which is okay.
Okay.
No, one, one space per two employees in the warehouse in addition to the one you had.
One space per employee in the warehouse. One space for every two employees outside, as an additional requirement. Okay, so, so four for the retail, two, okay.
Yeah, I count five for retail, two, fi- four, plus the one employee.
And then two for warehouse, which brings us to seven, okay.
But if you want to make a reduction in that...
No, I, I see the, I see the math.
We're not, we're not in a position of arbitrating these. It's one of the frustrations, difficulties of, of serving on the board. We are in a position to help you interpret the ordinance and, to, to the best of our ability and, and yours. So that if by looking at where employees are assigned allows you to...
Reduce.
Do what, do what you want here, which is to, to change those 200 feet, increase those 200 feet. You ought to look carefully at that. That's all, that's what we're saying. We, we don't have the ability to waive this requirement.
Right, and we are not asking for a waiver for the...
Well, I think, I think you are. You're asking us to waive the requirement that a parking space, that the, the additional parking spaces included are not in accordance with the land use ordinance.
I guess you could say we're asking for a waiver for the parking space sizes?
Yeah, you are.
Okay, sizes, but not, we are meeting the parking space number of space.
Right, and you could, you could have twice as many parking spaces if you want to shrink them down to five by 10. I'm just saying, and I'm being facetious, but you, you take my point?
I, I get your point. I, I also want to say that this is, this, the spaces were, have been in existence for 26 years.
Five of them.
Five of them. I mean, you're looking...
You want to, you want to create two new ones.
Okay.
And you want them to be substandard.
So if you would like, I guess, then it's up to the board whether you want us to increase them by two feet. Two spaces by two feet?
You'd then change the impervious surface?
Yes.
Making it more non-conforming?
Yeah.
Where, where I'm going with this in my head, and I'll, I'll ask the other, the rest of the board whether this even makes sense to pursue, is we're, we're in a discussion about whether this is a non-conforming, an existing non-conforming property. And legally so, in that the findings of fact have been submitted. Dates of that finding of fact aside. So I think we're bound to not increase the non-conformity, right?
In any instance, for anybody.
I think we're stuck with that.
Yeah.
Right? That, that's our, that's our, part of our mission statement. So, so if we're sitting here saying, well, no, I, I guess, I guess I could be persuaded that the existing five haven't been burdening anybody. It's a non-conforming situation and I'm not making it any worse. But if I add two more, I can't, I can't go tell you it's okay to make those. Non-conforming, because that would clearly increase the non-conformance.
Well, I guess I could argue also that we're here requesting a waiver to create two new spaces to become conforming with the number of spaces and asking for a little leeway in the size of the spaces so as not to increase the lot coverage.
You're not non-conforming now with respect to the number of spaces, though.
Not if we increase the retail square footage. Like if, then we become non-conforming.
Today...
Today.
And you haven't done the increase.
Right.
You are not non-conforming with respect to the number of spaces.
Correct.
You have 600 square feet and the math I just heard...
Actually, I say correct, but I'm, I'm not, we have, 600 spaces would be three, I mean, 600 square feet of retail would be three, plus one would be four, and two warehouse spaces. So we are, we would need six to today's standards. So, but we are existing grandfathered from the previous approval.
I thought any additional change needed to either, either be in compliance or make non-conformance or compliance less.
No greater.
No greater.
I agree.
So if currently you're in compliance or conforming to the prior statute, right? Then it, it would seem, any additions that you make have to be compliant with the current statute or ordinance.
So, so if somebody argues that you're adding 200 square feet, so therefore you need to add a parking space. You didn't do anything else. I, I think that, that's an argument that we should consider in terms of the math.
And the parking space, though, needs to be...
Needs to be a compliant parking space.
Nadia, do you agree?
Do, do you feel that there's some leeway in the parking space in the size in exchange for not wanting to increase the lot coverage?
No. You, you already, I assume you're already non-compliant with respect to lot coverage?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so no. There's no way I can, I can tell you to increase the lot coverage.
You can't do that.
Right.
I think...
So I'm asking for a reduction in the size of the parking spaces, so we're not doing any increase in the lot coverage.
This is a gravel parking lot. There's no striping in it, there are no lines. If someone comes in with a great big pickup truck, they're going to take up two spaces, just like they do at Hannover, whether they're striping or not.
Well, if you look at different zoning ordinances in all the different towns, the most common parking spaces are either nine by 18 or 10 by 20. It's, that's pretty much the standard in all towns. So we're not asking for a big stretch to go from 10 by 20 to 9 by 18.
Nobody's arguing that what you have hasn't been functioning.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I think I heard you say, add, that I've added 200 square feet.
That's what I'm hearing. I want to go from 600 to 800.
Which is equivalent to one additional parking space.
And that's what I heard.
Right, so I got, I need one more. I have currently five.
Yeah.
So I would need six.
Yes.
And the sixth one would have to be...
Meet the definition.
Of nine by 18.
No, no, 10, 10 by 20.
10 by 20. So I would have...
That's my logic. This is real time.
No, I'm just, I'm following you.
Okay.
No, I'm fine, I'm just trying to make sure I heard right. So I got five nine-by-18s.
Yeah.
And I'm adding one 10 by 20.
Knowing that that's a non-compliant situation, I can't make it any worse.
Right.
How did we get to six from seven?
Because...
We went from six from five is what we did.
Yeah, but...
Right, because I just added one for the extra 200 square feet that I put in.
But there were one short to begin with, so we're supposed to...
There are other one shorter than, or the...
Right.
I don't want to make that any worse.
Yes.
The standards may have changed.
Sure, I, I don't know what they were in 1999.
Yeah, but I, I had an approved site, an approved set of...
You hear, he's answering your question.
Oh, I hear it, but I'm coming from the other direction.
Approved set of parking spaces. I have now added 200, or requesting 200 square feet more. That would require one additional parking space. So that goes from five to six. That one would require to be, can't be any more non-conforming, so it'd be required to be the standard, 10 by 20.
I'm still short a parking space, just like I've been for the last 20 years.
Yeah.
I see where you're going with this.
Yeah, I don't know if everyone on the board likes it, but that's, that's the string I'm pulling on.
I can get there.
It's fine with me.
Oh, it is? Okay.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I, I think if someone were going to push on this in a public hearing, because they didn't want it to happen, they would say, that's unfair. The standard would be seven. You don't have room for seven, therefore you cannot make...
Somebody could say, if you're making any change at all, that whole site needs to be brought up to current standards.
And they, and I think that they could argue that that's incorrect, but I don't think anybody on Langsford Road is going to make that big argument.
I'm not going to make that argument, but, but, yeah, that would, that would be the basis of it. And, and I think in general, if you look back, we've looked at non-conforming sites and making changes to them. Those changes cannot, and, and I, I think you'd be hard pressed to find an example where we screwed up on this, cannot be more non-conforming. We pay a lot of attention to it.
I remember a parking lot that, that we did that required signage and an entrance and an egress and an entrance and...
Well, we haven't...
And it's been years, I'm still waiting to see that go up.
Okay, so enforcement is a whole nother aspect to this.
It's a gravel driveway, and you know, people park where they park.
If we interpret it that way, we would reduce the lot coverage by eliminating in this design one space with a six.
And you get off of the fringe of that stormwater.
Yeah.
Two.
Would have more grass.
You would eliminate one, but the one additional would be bigger.
Sure, yeah, that's no problem.
A little.
Or you could make a wall bigger.
But by, by the way, the same argument I would make, you need to consider applying to the width of that two-way travel area. That we cannot, you're not making it any worse. It's still, it's still shy from what we would ask you to do today, but...
Yeah, no change to the impervious surface.
You're not making it any...
You're not altering a building.
Well, and you're, and you're not making it worse than the 18-wide versus 20.
There ain't a lot of room to make it worse.
And it's not a highway.
Yeah.
No, and we're talking about traffic for four parking spaces, which is...
Yeah, which would be in the back.
Right.
Okay.
And there's no current public parking in front of the building on that side, just on the opposite side of Langsford Road?
Yeah, that's correct. Not legally public parking.
Right, but people park.
Okay, so...
I presume, did you look at just having them go directly in in front and make three spaces out of what's currently two?
Not allowed to back into a road. That would be great. We would love to do that. It's common that you see people doing that.
When they leave, then they're...
Legally, you're not allowed to back into it, by the way. That's why they're like that in the original approval.
Okay. Still my turn?
Yeah.
All right, all right. So, you said, and I'm still on, I have one, one last question on that, on that narrative.
Yes.
No anticipated increase in traffic.
Right.
So, so why, why are you increasing your retail business if you don't expect to get any more business?
They want to increase this, the wall space of what's being sold.
So you think it's not a significant change?
It's 200 square feet.
200 square feet.
Okay, all right. I'm good with that.
That's my closet.
There's a lot of clothes.
Yeah.
I have one, one other thing here. There's a waiver request page.
Yeah, the first one, 246, 10.6C6.
I'm, I'm developing my technique for how I, when I go through these things, I make all these notes. Then, then how do I cause myself to come back to them in some reasonable manner? We're in front of the board here. So, okay, so list of waivers and several questions. First of all, I just mentioned, and I'll, I'll hit this later for the rest of the board. I think this might be a model for how we could consider modifying applications to have an applic-, have, have a waiver page like this.
Yes.
With a checkbox and all, it's very helpful. Thank you for that. The only changes to the parking lot would be to rotate, and my question was a layout diagram. Is this, maybe I just need a guidance through here to make sure I understand it. Where are the seven that you have identified here and where's the road coming in?
The light gray is all what's existing today.
Gravel driveway.
Gravel, yeah.
Oh, okay.
The two spaces in front and the one on the right is a handicap space.
Where's Langsford Road on this?
Uh, vertical, yeah.
Okay.
The light gray is existing and the dark gray is where we are becoming, we're, we're going to remove that triangle, the corner...
All right.
And rotate the spaces, so they're straight on.
So if, if you go consider what we talked about tonight, that right-hand side might be different, but the front would look the same?
Yes.
And I think I answered my other question. We request a waiver for the painted arrows of signs. It's a gravel driveway, you don't...
Correct.
You don't, you don't need them. Yeah, it doesn't make any sense.
There was one on the, the first waiver request there. The closest point from this structure, structure to a body of over is approximately, I think that's over should be bodily, body of water.
Oh, you're correct.
We request a waiver for bumpers or wheel stops. Can you remind me what that requirement is and why, why you don't want them?
The requirement is in the, in the ordinance and mostly they're difficult to plow.
Can, can we look at what, what it says?
I don't have it in front of me.
No, but, but Nadia could, can help us with that.
So in the, under performance standards in chapter 10, Planning Board Site 4...
Right, 73F.
Yes, 7, parking lot design criteria. Under parking, bumpers and/or wheel stops shall be provided where overhang of parked cars might restrict traffic flow on adjacent through roads, restrict pedestrian movement on adjacent walkways, or damage landscape materials.
So I would argue that's not applicable here.
Not applicable.
And I don't have any problem with a waiver.
Thank you.
Yeah. One more item on stormwater. You haven't changed, you're not changing the stormwater. Is there any record of that the system is functioning as designed?
I mean, I, we don't have a legal record, but I can tell you, we, we actually have photographs of it filled up with water. Yeah.
Is it, is it working?
Works beautifully, actually.
Okay.
Previously, there was a lot of stormwater that flowed down Langsford Road.
Oh, yeah.
It landed, we didn't want it, the original plan is called a swale.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I should have asked you to go to the, to the microphone.
David Betz is the...
Right into it.
Original swale was created 25 years ago, has worked. It, water flows down the left side of the barn into a retention pond in the back of the property.
And I'd argue that nothing you've proposed is going to change that position or...
It's never flooded either. It, it tends to evaporate in between storms.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
And there's, there's no culvert on, on the side of the road, right?
That's correct, there is not.
That, that's all I had.
Mother, mother nature has tested it well this spring.
Okay, so, again, I think you're hearing that the, the sense of the board is, is that as long as we don't increase the non-conformance that was approved with the findings before, and we look at the incremental need per the current standards for parking and, and satisfy that to the current standards, I think we'd be amenable to that. Is that consistent, guys?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
So we'll adjust the site plan, I can submit new ones.
But my thought would be to, to move that we continue the initial... But my thought would be to, uh, to move that we continue the initial review and that you come back with, with the adjustments that, that you'd like to propose.
Any way we can make the adjustments, but move on to the public hearing? Because it's just, the change would be that just that one parking space.
I would hazard against that, we've, you know, we've come up against this a few times, but.
Yeah, we've gotten ourselves into trouble.
Voting application complete without a complete application is not, uh, it's not really advisable.
We got our hands slapped, and rightly so. So I appreciate your patience with that.
Are we able to make it to the next meeting? Or, because we have a two-week time that we need to turn in new drawings?
Yeah, we, as long as you get us new materials by noon on Wednesday next week.
Wednesday, okay.
Good. Um, I just wanna make sure that the planning board is clear, it is an explicit requirement in your land use ordinance that any change of use requires meeting these parking standards. Just so everyone is clear on what the.
Yeah, yes.
The requirements are, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we need to vote to make it continue, or just continue?
No, I think you're right. Uh, I, I moved that we, uh, continue the initial review, there was a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, yeah. Thanks for catching that.
Good job, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is number two-five-zero-five-zero-two. And it's for an application on New Bitterford Road. Eric Peterson. Representing.
Can we project our project on the screen, too?
Sure.
That's great. I would need to have you tell me where it is.
It's in the, it's in the chair.
Take your time.
Take your time while I get my act together.
Would you like me to start while we're waiting for that, or?
No, no, I'd like, I'd like Nadia to be able to pay attention as well, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Eric.
All set?
Please.
Okay. Hi, I'm Eric Peterson from Peterson Design Group in Kennybunk, and I'm here tonight representing John Bradford King and Pamela Epstein. I believe it's supposed to be Pamela Epstein-King Family Trust. It's, the deed recorded name is the John Bradford King and Pamela Epstein Family Trust. So I'll call it the Trust, how's that, or the King Property. At twenty-two New Bitterford Road. There is an existing house on this property. There are actually two lots. Lot, you'll see in the site plan, the, the main house is on what's called Lot Four, and the cottage to the left is on what's noted as Lot Four B. So the two kinda go together because the, you have to go through Lot Four to get to Lot Four B. And the site plan really.
I know you're saying this right, but I haven't got Four and Four B straightened out in my head yet.
Okay.
You have to go in through the main house to get to the cottage, and the cottage is what the application is for.
No, it's actually.
The other way around.
You got it. This is Lot Four, the main lot. Once you, you access that, New Bitterford Road is out here.
Okay.
You pass another King family property, and another King family property to get to Lot Four, and the cottage is beyond that, on Lot Four B.
And is there a separate entrance for Four B?
This is, this is how you get to Lot Four and.
Hold on a second, hold on a second, we got multiple things going on.
So.
We're hearing you.
Four A.
Okay.
I can't do anything about that. Can I? Can I talk?
We'll wait, then.
We're attempting to pull up the plan.
Okay.
I'm doing this on the fly.
I understand. No, and, and we're happy to wait for that. I apologize that, that we didn't.
I just, Eric. Four A.
Or four.
Four. Well, okay, but there's a forty-one dash one dash four. Then there's a forty-one dash one dash four A. Then there's a forty-one dash one four B.
So we're talking about forty-one, one, four.
Okay.
Is the main, the larger parcel to the right.
Right.
And then the smaller parcel to the left.
Is B?
That's right.
Okay, and what is four A? That's the property also owned by the same family in front of Four.
Yeah, forty-one A might be twenty New Bitterford Road, which might be the, um, the, um, Cynthia King Guffey Trust and the, the. So, little family history here. The, the, our client, Brad King and his wife Pam, used to own the house ahead of this one that is right adjacent to New Bitterford Road, the lot you're speaking about.
Four A.
With, with his sister and, and her si, and her sister's husband. They, they co-owned that house for several years that I designed many years ago. And their parents owned Lot Four, the main house here, the bigger house.
Okay.
And the cottage. They owned both of those properties. And so, this last year, Brad and Pam ceded their interest in the property they shared with their sister and acquired the property that used to be their parents' two houses.
Okay.
And so now.
And I guess the, my point for the question, which thanks for the explanation, though, it's, looks like there, the entrance to the Four, Lot Four property, is an easement through the property in front of it.
That is correct.
Okay, that was my, the purpose of my question.
And that's through a, a ribbon driveway?
Mm-hmm, correct.
That's already established?
Correct.
What kind of driveway?
A ribbon, the two strips.
Ribbon? Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just learned that term this year, it was, I was called it a strip driveway, but apparently it's a ribbon driveway, so.
I like ribbon.
We used it in the right.
I know, I, I'm.
Depends on how much it costs.
It's now part of my lexicon.
I'm gonna start dropping it at parties.
That's right.
What's that?
I'm gonna start dropping that part, it's, well, they have a ribbon driveway.
Ribbon driveway, yeah, you.
They'll look at you like.
In the know.
Is it, is that easement permit?
Yeah.
That, that's baked into the.
It's in the deed.
In the deed.
Yeah. Likewise, the, the easement, the, or the right-of-way that goes through Lot Four to Lot Four B.
Right.
Is for access to Lot Four B, yes. All right, so.
So we have, we have the map up, thank, thank you very much for that.
So we know who's who in the pew here, right? We've got everybody situated.
Kinda.
I'm, I'm gonna stand up here and just, just make sure I do. The, the work that you're doing, that you're, that you're, the main part of this application is for?
No, both.
It's both, but if you, if, if you have to have a, a primary and a secondary component, the primary component is the right-hand lot. That's right. Yeah, that's right. The second, the second lot, there's no change to the building whatsoever, and some very slight changes to the landscaping.
And help me find the entrance and the proposed eas, the, the, the proposed part, new parking spaces.
Gotcha, okay, so would you like me to, how, how do you want me to do this? Go, go, go up to it.
Use your laser pointer.
Oh, here we go.
The shadow knows.
Yeah, all right.
So this is, the driveway now goes right in this way. This is the entrance to the garage currently.
Yeah.
And then it breaks off to the left to parking over here.
So it, it says gravel driveway, it's, the lines that drive where these lines here.
That's the old driveway.
Okay.
And what Brad wants to do as part of this project is to get the driveway out. All the cars park right here in front of the house. He would like that to be. There's some red. Oh, man. Get that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't look at it.
Not changing the impermeable surface, relocating the parking lot over here.
We're, we're trying to create a front yard, is what we're trying to do. So, and Brad wants the parking away from the front of the house, so the cars don't stack up, he wants them back here where you don't see them.
Yep.
And we're changing the entrance to the garage. We're, we're, this is a one-car, like, tandem situation now. One car wide but too deep, which isn't really that convenient. So we're going to approach it from the side in a two-car, one-deep, normal configuration right here. So we've got two parking spaces right here in the garage, and then the remainder of the parking is behind the house. Does that make sense? And so, oh, so when we met with Galen way back in the fall, he said that as part of this project, he wanted this driveway to be rerouted so that it fit in the right-of-way that was established for travel. Because it wasn't, this was just unused before. Because it exists, he said that as we developed this plan, he wanted to see this driveway bend and travel within that right-of-way to get us back to the back.
As far as it could. And is it currently gravel or currently just grass?
It's ribbon.
So the ribbon is currently there.
Uh, yeah, well. It is, it's a ribbon driveway from the street right down here from New Bitterford Road.
Yep.
All the way into here is a ribbon. And then it becomes all gravel right here.
But this part, what's here currently?
It's all new.
Nothing, that's all the grass.
This is where the, this is where the right, right ribbon driveway.
Got it.
Instead of going this way, we wanna bend it into the right-of-way where it should be and send it to the back.
So you're not increasing the impermeable surface?
No, in fact, I'm, I'm giving you the synopsis, and then I'm gonna ask Todd Richardson from Richardson Associates Landscape Architects to come up here. This is really his work, what you're looking at, so I want him to be able to explain it a little more clearly. I'm giving you the overview.
Okay, one, one more question. This blue line here, this is a property line?
This is the property line, yeah.
And so, but they own both properties.
They do.
And, but we're putting parking right up against the property line. Right there?
Yes. There is already parking right here, the parking actually goes deeper right here.
Okay.
This is currently parking right here.
It is currently parking.
See it shaded in underneath?
Yes, I do now.
I don't.
I do, so this, there's a, a red shading right along here for those of us who are red colored.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's the old.
So that's not new parking, it's existing parking with different landscaping now.
Right.
Yep, okay.
And, and some of the existing parking is going away, that you're, you're saying that.
Taking away, every, we're creating a front yard and getting it, the parking out of here.
Yep.
Yes, that's right.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Makes sense to me now.
So, no, I, I still don't get what, what change are you making to Lot Four B?
Not much, I'll let, I'll let Todd talk about that, because it's, it's only landscaping.
It's not, it's not, oh.
Nothing to the building, this building stays exactly as it is.
Do, do you need to do a site application for, for changing landscaping?
No.
No, I don't think so.
Why does this have anything to do with this site application, and why, why is it on this page?
It's more coverage related.
It is fully in the floodplain. Lot Four is, but.
No, 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 Four B.
That's in the floodplain, too.
Four, Four B. I, I just heard, I'm, I'm exaggerating here, I just heard, Four B, the only change on Four B is the landscaping is changing. So I thought, why is it in front of the planning board?
No change to the structure.
Why is it coming to the planning board?
Well, you're coming to the planning board re, really for this parcel. It just, this is.
No, 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 you got it all over your, your application page. You got Four B is changing from eight ninety-six to, you know.
Because that's a landscaping, it's lot coverage based on landscaping changes.
If you weren't doing Four, and you were only doing Four B.
Yeah.
Would you be coming to the planning board to do those landscaping changes?
Probably yes, because there are some de minimis lot coverage changes based on the landscaping changes.
There's hardscape changes.
Correct, yes.
Got it.
I guess that's what I mean, maybe I missed.
No, 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 no.
No building changes.
No, 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 I understand, but you are changing some lot coverage.
So impermeable surface changes would be subject to come to the planning board, right?
Yes. Lot Four B.
Right, they're gonna put tar over, whatever. If they're gonna change the imper, the permeability by adding hardscape.
Yeah.
Right?
And my, and my understanding, Lot Four is here mostly because it's within the seventy-five foot setback from the resource. So the, the lot is actually otherwise conforming, they're below their lot coverage maximum allowance, like, other, the, but the, the resource setback is really our.
Is, is Four B conforming without a parking, parking for cars? Or is that covered by easement?
Same question.
Easement.
Well, is there parking there currently, Four B?
I didn't understand the question.
Because Four B currently have parking for the cottage. He's prepared to do that, so.
These exist.
I'm gonna step off for just a second.
But that's outside of the boundary.
No. We're talking about the changes inside.
I just wondered whether that was in place or not.
Let's find out.
There we go.
Before, before, before you change, Eric.
Yeah.
I, I recall the last time you were here, sort of hypothetically talking about would you entertain the parking change? Weren't you talking about where the parking for one lot was on the other lot?
It is.
That, that's what I'm missing.
That's this.
Yes, this is, but I'm.
Four B.
These two cars.
Yes.
Are the parking for.
Thank you, okay.
Yes.
All right.
The parking for.
That's what I had, I had that reversed.
Straddles the line right now. And with the, I'm Todd Richardson, by the way.
Hi, Todd.
Todd really, Todd really has all the answers.
Could you guys do a comedy routine with that mic?
He, he has, he has really set you up.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna be up here, you can, you can speak into this mic.
Thank you.
It's not for us, it's for the folks at home.
Turn it off.
No, just, just.
Keep it on, but you hold on to it.
Yeah, just keep it in your hand, in case you're moving around.
All right, is this mic on?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, good evening, I'm Todd Richardson, I'm here with Eric to present information about this project and answer any and hopefully all of your questions. So, there's been some great questions to date. The question regarding the parking is that Eric began to describe the current footprint of the parking goes much further towards the resource, as you can see.
Oh.
Right here. And it currently comes over right in here. So, our approach was to lessen the non-conformity by bringing it back into here and, uh, take that away in regards to it being gravel. So that's.
Just, ma, make, make me appreciate where the resource is and how we're close and we're getting further away, where's the resource exactly here?
It goes all the way around the property. It goes all the way around the property.
Is it not showing on this? I, I see.
It's shaded there.
The scallop line, isn't it?
The scallop line.
Is it?
The scallop line is the resource.
What makes you say that?
To a broader.
Well, cause there's marshes over here and they're talking about moving this away from the resource, but they can label it. This is all resource.
Okay, so let, let's, let's, let's let them tell us that. Where's the resource on this drawing? And so where's the seventy-five foot setback or whatever?
I'll point all this out, and this is all in your binders too, all this material, but I'll review it here. So here are the two lots that we've been looking at.
Yep, microphone please.
This is the area here.
You can put that other stuff down.
Thank you. Um, so the salt marsh comes around, uh, in this direction over here, so.
So that's the general direction. But where, where is the high water mark, if you will?
Here's a seventy-five foot right here.
You have that?
Oh, okay, okay, that's.
See the purple, the purple line right here?
Yes.
That's the high water mark.
Thank you.
And it kind of comes all the way around and all the way around to the other.
So the shading here, the gray shading is sort of artistic.
It's a tree line.
That's vegetation.
Tree line.
Okay.
Yep, different than resource. So, uh, one of the things that I know you're interested in is lot coverage. And so on sheet one oh one in your packet, we have developed.
Take this one down?
Great, Eric, thanks.
So, so I think I just finally appreciated where that old parking was, was. No, which, how, how is that old parking in the seventy-five foot setback? It's not, right?
The old parking is.
Oh, here.
Yep.
No, I thought it was this, was this, no.
That's the high water mark.
That's not the seventy-five feet.
Ah, so this is the seventy-five feet.
That's the eighteen feet from.
That's the fifteen foot.
Aye, 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 seventy-five feet. So all of this is non-conforming.
Thank you.
By truncating this, you're making it less non-conforming.
This is coming at you this way, creating this line.
And is there a current easement for this property to park here?
Uh, right now, they're, they're both owned by the same family, yep.
Okay.
So no, I think is the answer. And I think what we talked about last time was maybe there needs to be.
And you'll see that as a comment in the memo too, to, a comment from the planner, we suggest adding an easement in case, at some point the owners decide to sell lot four B or, you know.
And then how do they park?
Somehow it changes ownership.
Is the alternative that they can merge four and four B into one lot?
That's a good question. I don't know if they would be able to do that.
They don't wanna do that.
It is an alternative.
We, we, we would like it.
It's an alternative, I don't know if it's a viable alternative.
Well, actually, no, because then you'd have two single family homes on one non-deforming lot, which.
We would, we'd like to guard against the situation where the larger lot is sold.
Yeah.
And the smaller lot now has no parking and it violates the code.
But, but is that a planning board issue or is that a buyer beware if there's ever a sale issue?
Well, it is a pre-existing condition.
Right.
Um, you're, you're not, you're not changing that, so I don't, I'm not sure we would be insisting on it, but.
Yeah, the, that was the understanding that, you know, currently the parking for this occurs right here and uses this as a hammerhead. We're improving that as we've stated before, moving it back, so what has existed for twenty years, I think?
Say again?
What has existed for twenty years in terms of circulation in cars?
Grandfather did anyway.
Right, so the request was made by the code enforcement office.
It's a suggestion, you know, kind of an applicant beware situation.
And, you know what, if, if that. It's, yeah, I think that's beyond the scope of our review. To, only to have pointed it out, I think was within our scope.
Okay.
And I think Eric addressed that at the last meeting about adding language to any deeds, remember?
Right, I thought that my takeaway was that was gonna happen, but it sounds like we really thought that.
We're not gonna give you legal advice, but there, when you ask the question about what could be included on a deed or a transfer or some legal document, we said you need to talk to the lawyer.
Yeah.
Talk to the lawyer.
That's nice. Okay.
I think it's a very elegant design. Yeah.
I just wanna highlight, if I could, some of the specifics of coverage. So this table on sheet, uh, L one oh one in your packet has a very detailed breakdown of the different lots and their different coverages and the types of coverage. And if you look at that, you'll see that we are no more non-conforming than what the existing condition is now. We improve upon that for both lots.
Less non-conforming.
Less non-conforming.
Yeah, and I think that now that you've, you've, you've helped us see where the seventy-five foot setback lines were and all, not, not, not that we couldn't have seen it before, but I didn't. I'm in a better position to, to, to understand that chart.
Yeah, I've worked on this property for many years and it's taken me a while to really understand the multitude of lines that intersect and I think.
You've created this mousetrap.
Did you know they had a ribbon driveway?
I actually drew the ribbon driveway that's there now, so we could talk later. No, but it is, it is complex. There's a lot of environmental, uh, regulatory or resources that are protected.
Sure.
There's a lot of town setbacks and requirements and, uh, this plan addresses those and we hope we brought forward the information that will allow you to see that. So, this table is critical to address the overall coverage and it's broken down extensively in terms of the lots and the type of coverage.
Yeah.
To summarize that for you.
Was that a garage used as a barn or something? Why, why did they have access to it that way and why did they only have it as a double Y going the wrong direction?
Um, it was part of the house when it was built.
Yeah.
So, it's, um, I mean, it reads like a barn. If you look at the pictures of the property, it, it feels like a barn.
Yeah.
But the first floor is a garage and the second floor is just a big room, like a big room with a pool table.
When was it first built, any idea?
Ninety-five?
Ninety-five, really?
It's in ninety-five.
So it's like an old building that had a barn and a carriage and a horse?
No, 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 not like that. No, it's modern.
All right.
Can, can you talk us through the, the changes to the smaller lot and the rationale behind them?
Uh, the smaller lot is the cottage lot here.
Yes, please.
Yeah. It's really just to help with circulation with the cars going from he- well, there's cars that'll park, that were here, they're gonna be over here, and then these are the cars for that. So maintaining the circulation up here, there's a wonderful view in this direction towards the salt marsh and, uh, the creek that runs behind here. This is not owned by this family, it's owned by another King family, but this is an open space. We call it the recreation area right here and this space overlooks that recreation area. So, you would come, uh, from one house to the other because they will own both. Um, you can come across and come up into these two spaces or into the house from this house, uh, as shown by the.
But, but not, not, not knowing what it looks like today, I'm, I'm having a hard time saying, what, what is it you're going from and to?
What are you adding, what are you taking away?
On, on the small, on the cottage lot.
There's some additional pavement. Right now, there's a small bit of pavement, well. You have the survey in your set as well, but you can see the specifics of what's, can we put the survey screen up on the?
Yeah, that'd be great.
The survey piece?
How, how would you know, how, how can you identify that?
That is on.
Yeah, spread it.
Not working.
Can it help you find it?
It's probably two pages.
I need all the preview screens so I can see where to grab it. Drag it from that screen.
Do you have the whole application that you can?
Hold on. Doing my best, I'll see the cursor. I like the cursor right here.
That's funny.
I got it.
Drag it in my screen so I can see what's going on.
The upper one's added.
And just. This is the, uh, one field. This is the, the garage.
It's white, it's mostly white. That's it, yeah. Is old school manual?
Yeah, yeah.
Here we go. Packet, by the way.
Yeah.
Um, that's the survey.
Are we able to?
This is the proposed over the existing.
Oh, okay.
All the pavement that's back here, the gravel that's back here and removing that.
The red's going away, well, it's changing, that's what's existing.
Correct. So you were asking me, someone's asking me about what are the changes to the car lot?
Yeah.
And you can see in red, those are the areas that currently have walkways or seating areas.
Those are going, those are being minus.
And they're being changed with the colored and the white that's over them. So specific, you have the ability to look at the existing.
And that's in our package too, yeah, okay. All right, all right.
One of the forty pages.
No, I, I, I understand, but this, this really is an integrated project. To my earlier question of why, why are you muddling this with two lots and it's, it's really an, from, from an architect's, a landscape architect's point of view, it is one
It feels that way, yeah, that's right.
contiguous, integrated, uh, and need, needs to, to be successful.
And you've got lots of little places where you are removing impervious surface and you're moving that farther away from the resource. But you grab a little piece here, a little piece there, and you're moving it over here.
Yep, and we're no more non-conforming.
If we looked at it just from the standpoint of B from the cottage, is the impervious surface change on that particular property equitable?
That goes down, I think that goes down a little bit too, doesn't it, Todd?
Yes, it does.
It's cause it was, it was like eight percent.
I'm not grabbing some impervious here and putting it over there.
No, we're still.
That's fine.
Under the threshold for that, yes.
Good, that's, that's all I got.
Now, this helps a lot. I was getting lost looking at it on what was, you know, I was all.
Well, I might, I might again, when I go back, but this is answering the questions I was smart enough to. Do you wanna just take a minute and see whether we, do you have specific questions? All, we'll start, start with, uh, go from left to right if that's okay, Joe? Anything from your?
No, I think the, the red cross thatch is changing. Right, the red cross thatched on the overlay.
Yes.
Right.
Red is what was there.
Yep.
And the colored, nice looking stuff is what we're gonna do.
Right.
Yes, yeah.
That was all, that was mine.
Red is stop, green is go.
Okay. There you go.
I think the observation that was made about the connection between the two properties is one of the central goals. The same family owns both.
Yeah, yeah.
They don't now, and they wanna make them connected, so.
But, but they still wanna remain separable, it, it, you know, potentially, who, who knows what the future brings, yeah.
Very good.
Something else, Joe?
No, no, sorry.
Peter?
I'm okay.
Bill, I think I'm all set as well.
Michael?
I'm gonna ask, the seven trees that are being removed, they're not, uh, so big that we'd worry about them? They're not, what is it, at four feet, eight inches, or what is the?
Yeah, I think we're doubling the number of trees that we're taking down.
Understood that.
I saw that. I was just wondering what the ones are, how big are the ones that you're removing?
Uh, one of them specifically, this is the right of way here, so this is the hybrid plan, this is the way it goes now. And our current plan brings it back to this parking area that's back in here. There is a tree that exists right in here that needs to be removed, and if you look at our plan.
That was the X right over the car.
That's the X, and this tree right here is the one that's gonna replace it. So for, um, the one-to-one replacement, we're planning to put a larger tree back. We're using the right of way that's been requested of us here, took one tree out and it's literally within, I think, twenty feet of where it was. We're gonna be planting another tree.
Ask your question again.
I was just wondering the size.
How big is the one you're taking out?
It's in the packet, there's pictures of the trees, if you go to, I don't know what sheet it is.
But there's a requirement at four foot up off the ground, it's gotta, if it's so big around, there's an issue.
I think we just need some help finding it in the package, that's all.
Okay.
I think it's great that it's there, but.
They didn't look very robust.
Now you're coming up against the reality of the staffing of the planning board's capabilities.
Wispy looking tree bushes.
Oh, one oh three?
It's not a public.
I'm, I'm sorry?
It's not a public hearing, so it shouldn't be.
Is it? It, unless it's someone who's, these guys are expecting and they need help.
Timothy Fredel?
No, no, so, so there will be, to, to explain, there will be an opportunity for public input at, at the public hearing for this, which will not be this evening.
It would hit what we call for a tree.
So that sheet addresses the removal of trees and the planting of trees?
Good news is all the director butters are family.
That's correct.
Or, or, or water.
Oh, good.
Yeah, it's a unique property in that way.
Mike, did it answer your question?
Yeah, it, it meets the, it looks like it would meet the criteria of a, of a tree that we'd asked.
Yeah, how big, how big is it?
It looks like it's bigger than.
Very good red box.
Oh, it doesn't, it doesn't have it, but, but, but I'm hearing that it's going to be replaced by a tree that is equal in size, is that what I heard?
Yeah, be equal in size.
Probably not equal in size, but we wanna investigate putting a larger, I think five or six inch tree, you see the X.
So that's number three. That picture number three, I think, is what, that's the big maple tree.
And it's right.
Taking a matured maple and you're gonna replace it with?
A larger maple here, and then, as we stated, we're doubling, more than doubling the number of tree replacements overall. So, there are losses of trees that will be associated with the construction. And then there's this outlier tree, which sadly is in the middle of the right of way.
Yeah.
And the way to address that is to plant another tree of size as close as we can to it.
Absolutely understand why it's gotta go.
Yeah, as do we. I just wanted to be clear on, and, and again, a, a lot of this is so that the public will, you know, have an opportunity to understand what's, what's gonna be going on in their neighborhood and. No, no other, no hidden agendas here, but, uh, just wanna be clear. You've clearly thought a lot about this.
So the majority of the work.
Microphone.
The majority of the work is gonna be of a landscaping surface nature. It's not gonna be on the building itself besides switching the doors.
No, there's quite a bit of work to be done with the house too. It's a, it's a combination of, on lot four, it's a combination of changes to the building and landscaping. On lot four B, there's no change to the building.
Right, what are you doing to the building?
Taking off porches, you're changing the doorway, probably doing interior work.
If you look at, if you look at the drawings that are in your packet, there's, um.
That's a recurring theme, isn't it?
Yep.
You guys would read what we sent you.
You asked for it.
This is a very complete package. It's a very good job.
Thank you.
It was very comprehensive, I agree with.
There are, at the back of that package of drawings, there are as-bills of what is there now. The last two sheets are the as-bills of what is currently there.
Okay.
And the, within that package are the floor plans for what is proposed. So we are saving the nucleus of that house and the barn shape. We're substantially reducing the section of the house that goes from the kitchen and turns the corner toward the barn. It's, there's a master, uh, primary bedroom suite in that wing that we're, we're taking a lot of the square footage away from that area, putting a screen porch back and then adding a bedroom suite, if you wanna call it, south on that drawing.
From our standpoint, on the exterior, you are removing some overhangs, you're moving, uh, a deck, porch steps. It, you're not increasing the square footage of the house or the volume of the house?
Yeah, we are, yes, because we are allowed to have a thirty percent expansion in that.
So there's a thirty percent expansion in here as well?
There's less. There is a thirteen percent, thirteen point eight percent volume expansion and a twenty-five percent area expansion.
And you're not changing the height of the house?
Um, we are not violating the height restriction. We are staying under thirty feet.
Okay.
Yes.
It's, it's in, it, what I, what I heard in there is it's increasing, but not.
But not violation, are you raising it up?
Within the allowed thirty percent.
Okay, are you raising up the foundation?
No, we don't have to because it's already two feet higher than, it's, it's already one foot higher than the town's requirement of two feet higher than the BFE, the FEMA BFE.
So you're up three.
So we actually have a, the way it sits right now, it's actually one foot better than the town's two foot better requirement from BFE.
So where is it increasing in height?
In the main section of the house. It's a sort of a cape style.
Yes.
Roof now, and we're wanting to make it more of a two-story house.
Okay, and that's the, the dormers here? Right in here, okay. So this is where, it's, it's just a, a straight cape right now and you're gonna increase it with dormers and make use of the second floor.
Correct.
Thank you. Is this tied into public sewer?
Yes, yes, and so I've got a little tidbit of information on that. I did, I called the sewer department to get the tie cards for these two properties and they emailed me back and copied Nadia and said they don't have any such information for these two lots. So what they suggested is when we do some excavation out here, maybe have the sewer department come out. And, and maybe they can see what they can see and create a tie card to try to figure out where the sewer connections are. It's on town water and sewer, both of them.
You're, you're adding net one bathroom?
The, the bathroom count doesn't matter for my sewer perspective.
It's bedroom count, yeah. It's a net zero on bedrooms, yeah.
And I'm not doing anything that is more non-conforming.
Correct.
I'm not moving anything closer to the water.
Correct, because the closest point, we, we sat with Galen and went through our concept plans with him. Uh, the closest portion of the house to the resource now is the. Can I, where's that point? That corner right there of the existing house.
Yeah.
Is, shaky hands here, um, is thirty-four feet from the resource. And the closest point of the addition that we're talking about is forty feet from the resource. So to answer your question, it is not, no portion is any closer than the closest point of the house now.
And just, just for, for my sake here, a tie card, I, I don't think I understood before and I'm, just wanna check to see if I understand it now. A tie card is literally a card of, in a file.
A sheet of paper that has a very rudimentary drawing that shows.
I had a picture of something that was in the ground somewhere, it's not.
Oh, it just, it's a, it's a.
It's a data sheet.
It's a hand drawn sketch that shows where the line comes to the house and with a few dimensions.
It's like if you had a septic system, it would be what they'd use to go dig, you know, whatever, the counterpart would be.
It's a sketch, basically.
And it, and it would say how it was sized and, um, maybe.
It might tell how deep it is. Mostly it tells where it is.
Okay.
Yeah, the connection, the sewer connection.
But, this predates the keeping of meticulous records.
I guess, they just didn't have anything on, I mean, the, the one we did on Edgewood last time, they had a tie card on that property, but they did not have anything.
Nowadays, we take a photograph.
What's that?[1756.64]
Nowadays, we take a photograph, blah, blah, blah.
Right.
You're gonna have, have cameras back there.
Who, who, who are, Mike, did you get your?
Yeah, no, I was just trying to get my head around.
So.
I think we need it.
What was there and what's going there and.
No, I think it's.
So, in a nutshell, I can tell you, just to package it in a way that's understandable, the, the house on lot four, the bigger house, the main house, the footprint of that house changes, but in a way that does not change square footage of footprint, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
It doesn't get any bigger on the ground. The expansion of area is mostly by changing things on the second floor. So, bird's eye view, the same amount of square, square footage that's on the ground for that house now is what we're proposing again.
The footprint square footage is the same or less, and the, the living space, though, is enhanced by virtue of adding more on the second story.
That's correct.
And that's where your volume's coming from, too.
Correct.
But that volumetrics are well within the standard thirty percent.
Correct.
From the application.
Yeah.
Yes.
George, any questions further? Wanna come back to you?
Yeah.
So let, let me ask, let me ask several more. I'm looking at the, the handwritten application page. We just talked you through it. It says, uh, twenty-two New Bedford Road, Cessna's map forty-one block one, lot four. Well, I, I think we're saying it's really two lots that.
Yeah, I guess we could put, we could put, do we put two lots on one application then, or how would you like to see that?
People have done that in the past.
I'm, I'm okay with it, because it does seem, again, to be an integrated project, but I, I think we need to, 'cause later on, on the application page, it's all of a sudden I'm getting information about four B.
Yeah.
And I actually did spend some effort trying to, trying to figure out why I was confused, but.
We can modify that.
I think it's like, it's lot four and four B are, are involved here, and, and I think because of that, we want deeds for both of those properties in this application. I think right now there's just a deed for lot four.
That's right, because the, because the, yeah, because the structure that's, the, the structure change and the lion's share of the landscaping and hardscaping changes are on lot four. That's right. But you're saying because we do have.
Lion's share or not.
Because we have a little bit of activity on four B, you're saying we should include four B as part of the subject parcels.
I, I'm saying, I tried to talk you out of including four B at all. All right, and you said, no, 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 we're, we're changing the hardscape and this, and we need to come to the planning board and it would be separate. If we're gonna do that, we're gonna have.
That's fair. I don't think we can separate four B out.
I don't think, now, having, having understood it a little better, and I think it, I'm just saying we need to pay for the project properly, which means put, put the deeds for both and put the, um, make, make sure the application mentions both, which, which it does in, in part. But, but then it goes down and say, if you're finished, I, I don't wanna, if you need to take a note, that's, that's, I won't be able to do this twice. Lot size, twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-four square feet or point six-six acres minus twenty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-eight square feet, net lot size. I thought, what, what is he trying to tell me?
Yeah, it's not really a minus, it's a dash.
Okay.
So the gross lot size is twenty-eight nine twenty-four, the whole lot. When you net out what's below the high-water mark, the net lot is twenty-seven one ninety-eight. So the numbers, the number we work off of for our numbers for calculation, calculating, calculating lot coverage is off the net.
Because it's in the shoreline zone and.
Because you can't use, you can't use land below the high-water mark.
Yes, yes, yes. No, I didn't appreciate what was going on. So this is just for lot four.
Yeah, that's right.
So I would like to see the lot four be counterpart to that. Unless somebody else on the board could talk me out of it, I'd.
No, I think you're spot on.
Okay. So, so that's my, my nitpicking up there. This remove existing screen, da-da-da-da-da, add extension, replace front porch, all of that description is for what you're doing on lot four.
For the structure, that's right.
Right, and that's 'cause you wrote it.
That's right.
Can you add equivalent amount of information that says on lot four B?
Or.
Or changing the hardscape to be compatible with it, or just, you know, a sentence or two.
As well as, uh, hardscape and landscape changes to lot four A and lot four B.
Yeah, 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 to, to.
There you go.
To give me an integrated view of what all of this package is describing in great detail, pull it up to that very top level. And then you've broken it down, four and four B on the, um, I, I'm not sure why our application breaks down the percentage of the lot occupied by buildings separate from the percentage of the lot occupied by other impervious.
It's important for applications within the shoreline zone. And like to, to, because if you're, uh, or rather, applications not in the shoreline zone.
Right, right. So, so here, the, the total is what is important.
Yes.
And, and I, I guess I just need to add these together? Is that what's going on?
Can I ask you a question to further confuse things?
No, please.
How do I go about accounting for the, not changing, but existent lot coverage for structures for lot B, for B? Do you want me to list that separately? For like, on the last, the last, the last line item on that first page talks about existing footprint of existing proposed structure. That's lot four A.
Right, and, and I think for existing or proposed structure, and again, have we got existing or proposed? Why, why do we have that in there? Because you're, you're changing the structure, and that's what the thirty percent expansion.
Right, but what about the structure on lot B, four B, that we're not doing anything to?
I think you should just list this one existing four, and on four B, not applicable.
Yeah.
Okay.
No structural change.
Maybe just say that?
Or keep it the same.
But you don't wanna see numbers for that?
No, I don't think I need, I don't, I, I don't wanna make you go get numbers.
I, I don't think, I think it's worse than that. So I'm gonna ask, ask the office, if someone wanted to swap out impervious surface on their property, I've got a gravel driveway over here, and I'm gonna shift it over here and do some planting instead, would that need to come before the planning board?
Um, I don't think.
I'm taking out a walkway here, and I'm gonna move the walkway over there, and I'm actually gonna reduce the impervious surface.
Generally speaking, no.
Okay, so.
Inside and outside the seventy-five foot setback.
And, and inside the seventy-five foot setback still?
Within the seventy-five foot setback, I think they would have to come to planning board.
That's what I think is getting there.
Outside the seventy-five foot setback.
Why is this not two separate applications? Why is it not an application for four B, which is a separate property with a separate deed, and an application for four, which is a separate property with a separate deed? We're combining two properties on the same application, and it's not a subdivision?
I think because the work is encompassing both properties, so.
Just as long as we're clear on that.
And I, and I think as, I, I think if we can be clear, because we do need to worry about increasing or decreasing on one separately from increasing or decreasing the other, as long as that jumps out from this, I don't have a problem with.
I don't, but here's where I've got a jumble on it.
Processing it all together, but, but he's right, George is spot on here.
I got a jumble on it. So on the back page, on the very last page, I've got existing square foot, I'm gonna ignore volume for now.
Back page, I'm sorry.
The back page, the very last page of the packet.
Of?
Of the binder.
The binder, okay, all right.
Area and volume calculations, existing square foot area within seventy-five foot of the resource, four thousand eighty-five. Is that four or four and four B?
That's strictly for the building on lot four, four.
Okay, I, let's pull that out, because on the application, I've got square footage for lot four of four thousand two hundred and seventy-six, which is gonna increase fifteen point eight-six, but.
Right, because.
But there's two hundred and seventy-six that's not within the seventy-five.
That's the issue, because the, the seventy-five foot line.
Show, show me that somewhere.
The seventy-five foot line cuts through the building.
Got it, show me that somewhere, so that.
So the numbers that we talk about, like, I was, I went over this with Galen and asked him how he wanted to see it.
And this was enough?
Well, he said, I said, do you want me to show you the whole house and the, the, the volume and area expansion, or only calculate the parts within seventy-five feet? And he said only the parts within seventy-five feet.
But we sometimes get three-dimensional drawings, not that you have to do that, that show the demarcation of these weird property kinds of things.
Super complicated for this.
I understand that.
Don't do that.
But, but, so when I look at the square footage with the thirty percent expansion, you have calculated that to within the part of the property that's within the seventy-five feet that you are increasing.
Correct.
Could you, I.
Which is, which is why the number for this, for the footprint of the part that's a candidate for expansion is different and smaller than the number for the whole building.
I figured you've got a calculation somewhere that you did this.
Yes.
If you could possibly show, because I've got plans for what it's going to look like.
Yeah.
And I've got plans for what it looks like currently.
Yes.
Could you show me where that, I don't know where the square footage is increasing and where the volume is increasing. I'm just curious about that.
It's all in, within seventy, it's only the part of the house within seventy-five feet.
All within there, but, but when I look at this, I see where there's a dormer going on.
Yeah, oh, look at the, um.
Where's the square footage increasing?
The plan view, actually.
On the second floor.
On the second floor?
Yeah, you, you're not changing the foundation footprint at all?
No, but he is increasing square footage, so where do I increase it?
We're not changing the size of it, we're changing the sh, the shape and location of it.
He is changing the foundation.
Yes.
I, I thought all the square footage change was on the second floor.
The square footage addition is on the second floor. The, it's a net zero, a net zero footprint change on the first floor.
So that doesn't mean the foundation, you, you're taking some foundation away somewhere and adding it somewhere else?
Exactly.
Ah, could you show that somewhere where we can understand where?
This is my seventy-five foot line.
Right, that's what that is.
This is.
And you can see that there's, just this amount of square footage is outside seventy-five feet.
Got it, understood all that.
The bulk of it is within seventy-five feet.
And this is the upstairs?
Likewise, yes.
So where, where does it change? Is there an overlay that shows that line? It's not critical, man, but you know, I'm just trying to.
No, I wanna make sure you understand it and are comfortable with it.
I wanna make sure you understand it, too, so I'm going the right direction, yes.
Yep. Yes, keep going.
Oh, shit, sorry.
Two more pages. There you go, there's that same line. So see how there's more square footage on the second floor than there used to be?
You've been staring at the block more than.
There's nothing here right now on the second floor.
So this is where we're adding in square footage?
We're, in footprint, we're making this a lot smaller.
Yes.
And putting part of it over here.
But I'm adding some floor space.
Correct, and what remains.
Coming out floor space this way as well?
Yes, like we're getting rid of all these little dormers.
Yep.
And making this just straight up square footage.
Dormers on here, though.
Um, this is the second, second floor plan.
Can we, can we turn George's mic out a little bit, so it's not getting snagged in there?
See how it's thinner?
Yes, okay, so you're altering the sheet there, that's where you're taking away from something.
And then we connect back to what's already there on the second floor.
All right. It just wasn't clear to me where the square footage was adding on.
Only on the second floor.
Only on the second floor.
The first, the first floor is a net, net zero footprint change, that's right. We're making use of more of the sec, we're spending our volume and area expansion on the second floor.
What's in that space now, just?
Attic, tons of attic space, tons. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You can walk around up there in the attic.
So bringing it up to the high level, this back page is specifically for the lot four structure. And any questions that we have about the pluses and minuses of the impervious surface due to changes on lot four B, that we should pull off of the table that's on that L one oh three.
That Todd supplied, right.
That you showed us earlier.
I'm, I've, I can give you the building information.
I understand.
And Todd can give you the land information, yeah.
Right.
That's the, that's how.
I'm trying to think how, how we leave this.
I know.
Trail of breadcrumbs, so that when somebody looks at this without you here.
Right.
Or without us here, that, that it, you know, the important stuff.
Right.
How, how, how does one of us write the findings of fact for this and?
Who's that person?
I, I was hoping you would take this, George. You would, you were diving in.
Well, here's, here's the, the good news. Everyone I've been, been assigned to me has been postponed, so you're free.
No.
By that, they're all gonna hit it once.
We're gonna break that, we're gonna break that curse right now.
That's right. Thank, thank you for that. I think you do, too.
Is this a crawl space, or is there, that's it, is there ledge rock or something underneath there?
Water table.
It's all water table.
That would be the limiting factor there.
So all the utilities are upstairs?
They will be. They're not now, but they will be.
Attic?
Um, a combination of mechanical space and attic, yeah. Yep, yeah, you can't, with the flood zone change, we can't have any mechanical in that crawl space. You don't want it there anyways.
Right.
So, so let me, let me finish my questions on this application sheet. I'm, I'm almost there. This percentage of lot occupied by buildings, you're saying, and you give me for lot four, separate from lot four B, basically lot four is increasing percentage occupied by buildings from fifteen point seven-two to fifteen point eight-six. But, have I got that right?
Yeah, it's a bit tiny, tiny difference.
Right, and, and, but, but the square footage, if I wanted the counterpart to the forty-two seventy-six, is that in one of the tables that we talked about earlier?
That is probably off the survey. I think I got that off the survey.
Because in general, when I'm looking at these, remember I said earlier, I, I really wanna look at all of this combined, because if you're, you're going up a teeny bit in the percentage occupied by buildings, but then you're, you're going down a bit in the percentage, at least, in other impervious, and I'd like to be able to say net-net, I had this much percentage either occupied by the buildings or by other impervious surfaces, et cetera, et cetera. And so net, I'm going from something that was on the order of, uh, twenty-eight, twenty-nine percent. Here's the, here's the figure that goes with that, and now I'm at a smidge less than that. And I can't, I can't get that to pop out of this right now.
Right, okay, I'm trying to figure out how to get you what you're looking for.
I, I want you to be able to make a, a clear statement that says, this much is covered right now in, in a shoreline zone, either by the lot or by the impervious surfaces, and I'm clearly not increasing that.
For writing the findings of fact, I will have to take four-two-seven-six square feet on lot four, subtract it from the back page, which shows me that it's four-zero-eight-five square feet to arrive at this thing.
No.
But those two don't line up.
No, they don't line up.
Because the back.
That's only within the seventy-five.
The back page, Galen asked me only for the information about expansion within seventy-five feet, like the garage, we're doing a.
And that's, that's right.
For the findings of fact.
But for, for lot coverage.
Yeah, so lot coverage.
This is all in the shoreline zone.
Lot coverage goes up a, a tiny bit, because we're adding a little bit to the garage, which is outside seventy-five feet.
No, we're, we're with you. We wanted to be able to, we wanted to be able to quantify it.
I've got lot four, I'm gonna say currently is four thousand two hundred and seventy-six square feet, four thousand eighty-five of which are within the seventy-five percent, the seventy-five foot setback. The increase will be.
Yeah.
Five to five thousand, so I'm gonna have to do the math on these and make some traction, which is okay with me.
No, there's more than that, George. I'm, I'm gonna go one step further. That, that's gonna get you for the expansion.
Yep.
But you also wanna be able to say, oh, this, this lot is non-conforming to the twenty percent coverage.
Yep.
Which is a combination of the building and the other impervious surfaces. So you wanna be able to say, right now, this many square feet or this percentage of the total lot is covered, and I'm changing that to be another percentage, and I can't pull those numbers.
Todd, do your numbers, do your charts have that information?
That, that's, you want both of those data.
I feel like, let's. Let me see if Todd, Todd's got some pretty comprehensive numbers on lot coverage. Let's see if they answer your question.
Sure, I'll try. On sheet L one oh one, on the lower left, there's a table, and I have copies of that table with me. And I hope and think, from what I was listening to, that this is providing you what you're looking for. Existing and proposed.
I, I know you must have it somewhere, because otherwise you wouldn't have been able to say two point seven-eight percent or.
I know, yeah.
It was an insert. This was like an insert.
It's on one of the plans.
It even goes to describing the specifics of the hardscape. What's a wall, what's a step, what's a utility, those types of things.
Right, this is.
One of the reasons is why twenty years from now, someone wants to come by and they wanna do something and say, well, what was the expansion beforehand? Well, it was this percent within here, but we're not really sure. This, this gives it to me, thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Existing driveway, one twenty-eight point seven, proposed driveway, six point two one. Wow, really? You, you're only gonna have a proposed driveway of six point two one square feet? Is that what this means?
Is that inside the wetland setback?
It's existing and proposed for lot B, high level.
That's four B.
For lot four B.
That's four B.
Yeah.
So four, four B.
Why did I, why did I change from one twenty-eight to six point two one?
Four B, you can see, has like a tiny corner of.
Had driveway up here, and now they're just getting that six point, whatever, square feet.
Okay.
Well, that's only the portion that's on.
Well, that's only the portion that's on the actual four B lot.
Yes, yes, we need to be able to say separately that four B didn't get any worse with respect to total impervious surface. We need to be able to say clearly that lot four A didn't get any worse.
That chart should do that.
Two combined together.
It's on a, it's on one of the bigger, one of Todd's bigger sheets.
Thank you.
But it is small font, so that's helpful.
That's okay, as long as it's, it's in there.
Yep.
Yeah, so it last, I got a last.
Yeah.
I'm an idiot.
Todd, L one O three, is that the?
Oh, it's L one O one has that table that I just handed out.
So long sits in there, thank you.
Yes.
Where, you said that you're not going to increase the height to above what the town standard, what in fact is the height? Cause that's one of the things that goes in the finding of fact.
The current height of the building?
The height of the building at the, after your construction.
Oh, um, I can give you that exact number.
Okay.
I understand.
Yeah, and, and if you've got the current one, cause in the findings of fact, it'll say it's currently five feet high, and we're gonna make it thirty-five feet high or whatever it is. Thanks.
See, lot four B actually got worse, but it's below twenty percent.
It is.
So, we're good.
Yeah, this tape, this help, this helps a lot.
So it's going from conforming to conforming, so it's not really.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause lot four B lot coverage is single digits, right, eight percent or something like that.
Of course, but the, the number just.
It just seems crazy, you're, you're, you're doing matchbox cars.
You know, this, this makes a big difference, this. Yeah. Makes it very clear with. Thank you.
And, and this is the inset that, that's on that chart you showed us earlier.
It is.
Yeah.
You can see it's, it's on the corner.
So the original numbers existing come from the survey, they go onto that, and then we start deducting and doing all the calculations.
Outstanding.
So, so. Uh, can, can I suggest, I've, I've asked you to make several changes to the sheet in the, of the application, to update the application, that on this section down below that I'm worrying, can you just add a note that says, see this chart, somehow refer to it, for additional detail?
Okay, just put an asterisk.
Rather than ask you to try to trans-
Yeah, yeah.
Transform it back and.
And just see lot coverage calculations on L one O one.
Right, oh, oh, one O three, would you, would you, was it one O one?
One O one.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, right at the bottom, so it's, it's clear, yeah, yeah, okay.
That's good.
I think that, that, that's all I had there, I asked you for the deed, for the deed for four B.
Yeah, I'll get you the deed for four B, no problem.
I just wanna go through the, the memo that the code enforcement office wrote.
Yep.
Up here. We talked about the tree situation, and I think we're good with that, you've pointed out the one large tree, the specimen tree, if you will, and it's going to be re-
That's item seven.
Replace, but re- a replacement tree is being, uh.
Yeah, a larger specimen, uh, will go in lieu of that.
Not larger than the one you're removing, but.
No.
Larger.
Costs more than the house, I'm kidding.
Well, and having it installed costs a lot too.
Yeah.
It's a lot of, lot of expertise.
You know, the larger sized nursery stock that's available.
Well, don't you worry with the, with the high water table there and everything, about transplanting something of that size.
Still pretty good.
Yeah.
That one is, but put a new one in there.
Yep.
Yeah, and a red maple.
Pay extra for that guarantee.
Native plant on the native plant list that was provided, uh, that would be a good fit for that location.
Will, will do well with the, uh, with the wet feet, you're right, I think Nino would approve. In, in the memo, the, the office wrote, th- there was a concern that none of the information about the location and design of existing and proposed stormwater systems, sanitary waste disposal systems, water supply and methods of solid waste storage and disposal were provided, it's a outstanding comment.
Sounds like we have no idea where the sewer system.
And, and we have a, we have a, a method of inviting in the, you've, you've had contact with public works and and they're gonna get invited in at the appropriate time.
They copied Nadia on the response, and if you look at the tax card that's included in the application, it does say on there that it's Kenny Bunk, Kenny Bunkport and Wells Water District and Sewer.
Yeah.
It says right on the tax card that it's.
No, I, I.
Yeah.
I, I think that's, that's fine, I just, I wanted to have this discussion, because I don't, I don't want the code office to go all the trouble of going through these itemized things and have us not address them, right?
The other two with lighting and signs.
Well, before, before we leave that one though, what, is, is there anything else, this proposed stormwater system, we're not proposing a stormwater system, there's not, this is fairly level ground, there's not a change to the amount of surface that's covered, et cetera, et cetera, we're saying, so, so, Nadia, do you think the other contributors will be okay with this response?
Yeah, I, I feel good about that, when I, when I wrote the memo, we, you know, we hadn't heard about the tie card and everything, so.
No, but I know you're authoring this, but you're pulling in information from, from others and put you on the spot here.
The, you know, the net increase in vegetation is actually kind of a stormwater boon, so.
Yeah. On the lighting details, um, I agree, we are charged with, uh, reviewing lighting. Can, can you confirm that any lighting that you put in as a part of this is, is gonna be conforming with two forty-five?
Yes, sure.
I, I don't know if there's anything in this.
I think it was in.
I think I actually put that in my, uh, in my cover letter, in my cover statement, I put, all exterior lighting proposed for this site will comply with chapter two forty-five of the land use ordinance.
Okay, as promised, right.
Are you, are you changing the, the lighting, I, that's what I wasn't, I wasn't sure about, is with the, because of like the part of the house that's being reconfigured, I just wasn't sure if you had intentions of changing the lighting system.
I mean.
Might be a more modern fixture or something like that.
Might put an external light on the garage.
Yeah, I mean, it's really just residential scale lighting, anyway you slice it, there's no.
Okay.
There's no, like, high level lighting plan, it's just basically residential lighting.
Sure.
And, and you've asked, um, that, that, they, they mentioned that, uh, you're gonna need a flood hazard development permit because it's in the flood plain, and, and we are tasked with doing that, rather than a, adding a condition, I think, but, no, we can add that as a condition, right?
Yeah, it, it.
It's in the flood, we, we've observed that it's in the flood hazard zone and that a.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to get a permit, a building permit without that anyway, so.
That's, that's right, that's right, so we, we can clearly add that.
Yeah, but it, what you're saying is it doesn't have to be issued prior to us doing the finding of fact.
Absolutely not, only that we could, we could say that, yeah, we talked about this and.
It will be part of the course of permits that we will.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah.
There was something else that I, I interrupted.
We need a waiver on signs?
Just that we, w- we would give a submission waiver. They, they don't need to add any signs or anything like that, it's like, it's like not applicable.
Not applicable, okay.
But officially, it's a waiver.
Yeah, if, what, what we're coming to, to realize here, not specific to this application, is that the board's charter really is to, the, that applicants need to be addressing the submission requirements of, what, eighteen things, fif- fifteen things, sixteen things, and that we've been, uh, doing that in a somewhat hap- hazard fashion, and this memo that the code enforcement office is putting out is causing us to look at that more closely, and so you're the, you're benefiting from that.
And we're the test case, well.
Well, you're one of the.
I get that, some of the things on that list are really more applicable to commercial projects than residential projects.
We're gonna fix the list.
Well, this, the, these requirements are specifically the site plan.
Yep.
So it's not such, but yeah, I mean, there's no reason that a sign would be on this property.
That's right, so not, not applicable, we all agree, but, uh, tick.
Yes, we do not plan to have a major sign campaign here, no.
That'll be, that'll be great with us, alright, a- anything else? So, so I'm inclined to say that, uh, I'd like you to come back to, to make the changes in the initial application that we talked about, supply the deed, and, uh, we'll continue the initial review, and we'll, we'll go off and read a little more carefully the package as you've, you've, you've helped us to understand, and I think we'll be better prepared to po- finalize the initial application, this looks like it's all gonna go well. And, uh, really appreciate your, your time.
Package.
Thank you, it's a lot of Todd's work.
Understand it.
What is your timeframe to begin, uh, construction, your desired?
Late summer, end of the summer, yeah.
After the busiest season.
Okay, one thing we have here is parking, so, I mean.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Site space, you know, I, it's not like it's.
Well, that's good, because that was the one email that got sent in, right, was concerned about that.
Yeah, one of the issues, parking and.
There's been in a butter that sent an email in.
We can certainly dig into that at the public hearing, sure, it's in the, it's in the.
Did you see it, no, I.
I haven't seen that, do we have access to that?
Yeah, it's in the SharePoint, it's publicly available.
Griswold?
Griswold?
Is that the gentleman who was, who was raising his hand?
I think it's someone else.
Uh, there was somebody else that on.
That'll all come out in the public hearing.
The Bitterford Road that.
Must have been in one of, in the butter circle.
Griswold, yeah, twenty-sixth New Bitterford Road.
Okay, so that's a little further down the street then.
Just had a poor experience with some other renovation, construction work and wanted assurances that they wouldn't have the same issues, but you can read all about it.
Okay.
You can use the existing gravel driveway as a staging area.
Yeah, I guess, that's true, yeah. Yeah, until we, yeah, cause the landscaping portion of this obviously is not gonna be done until.
There you go.
After the construction.
Are, are all three of the homes, or four of the homes in the properties, are those all just summer residents?
Um, that's a good question, I know the first one in on the right is a s- is a year-round home, but used more in the summer. This will be a year-round home, but used more in the summer, the cottage as well. Um, the sister and brother-in-law that have the first house on the left, I don't know what their status is, if that's a, it's a year-round home, I don't know if they live there year-round or not.
Well, I, I, I move to continue the initial review.
Second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous?
Thank you for.
Thank you for your patience.
Chewing on that, it's a lot.
It was a tremendous.
Thanks for the presentation.
Good submission, thank you.
I warned you, this next one was gonna be a little more complicated than the last one.
Oh, thanks.
Size is a little bit bigger.
This was just softening this up, yeah, I'm sorry.
Does Langsford Road have a case manager? I'm not volunteering or anything.
Uh, no, no.
I just got one.
Is there a volunteer for, uh, for someone who would like to do eight Langsford Road, the first one that was on the agenda this evening? Um, Joe?
I'll do it.
Thank you.
Are they done for?
No.
Slap to have the public here, right?
Yeah, that's right, no, you don't, you don't.
Come in.
You don't need anything, do anything tomorrow, we just, you'll, you'll read it differently if you think you're. Alright, as, as to other business, I wanna mention a couple of things, um. One was last time, we, we took a couple of actions, I, I don't know if everyone had a chance to do them or not, but, uh, if not, let's just remind ourselves of them, one was to, we, we, we had an applicant here who was challenging us to say, well, I really don't wanna go do a tree survey, because what I'm gonna do doesn't depend on what the results are, why, why don't you waive it, there's a submission requirement, and I for one sort of came up short in saying, well, why, why are we asking for this, and, and we said we'd go back and do some reading and, uh, has anyone had a chance, everyone had a chance to do that or think about it? What thought, what thoughts do you have about his, his request, and in general, what our mission is in terms of, why are we asking for a tree survey?
Give you my opinion, I live on a big wooded lot, and it took down a bunch of trees when I moved in, because they were a threat to the house.
Yeah.
And I think that's a, you know, that's a homeowner's prerogative, in my view, and I don't think that, you know, the board talk, determining at four and a half feet from up of the ground, if it's greater than eight inches diameter, I don't see that as our business.
So if you had, if you had your druthers, you would, you would remove that requirement from the land use ordinance?
That would be my recommendation.
Okay, can you think of a reason why it is in there?
To preserve, if, if practicable, some of the ang- the, the big trees.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I can see that especially in closer to town, where, you know, you got.
Or on a new subdivision that's even on a large area.
But, but Mike, they do have the tagging program, right, in town?
The tagging though is not for large specimen trees in, uh, on a private lot, but most of the tagged trees are either in the town right-of-way or somehow, um, affiliated with the town's property as well.
And I don't think that they're actively tagging new trees.
And, and no, we're not tagging new trees.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm, on my lot, about half of it's wooded, and I mean, when we put in the driveway, we removed one tree, but that was, you know, just to try to keep them, and it swings and.
Yeah, yeah.
Rounds about, and, but that was a choice of my choice, and what.
You didn't have a site application.
What struck me, I, I just went for a building permit, I.
Yeah.
Didn't know there was a planning board, didn't wanna get them involved.
Well, it must not have been shore, shoreline or anything like that.
None of that was required, but what struck me, looking at this, is I could harvest all the wood on my lot now.
Yeah.
I cut them all down.
Yeah, I, I agree, absence.
Just, and that was kinda like, okay, so before I put in the permit, I'm gonna harvest all the trees and cut them all down.
So I'll ask my question, I'll ask my question again, not, not whether you like it or not, but why do you think it's in there?
To try to keep somebody that likes old trees, I mean, try to keep the.
But, but if we don't have any follow-up that says, now that you've identified them, you cannot remove them, or you have to replace them, and, and I couldn't find anything like that.
Yeah.
You are allowed as, you can put in a condition, so if someone has a, if someone has a huge, large specimen tree, that the tree survey pops up that they have, you can put a condition in your findings of fact that says they have to leave that tree preserved.
What is the, but though, I asked this question the last time, where does it say that, in an ordinance?
In your conditions section, so let me pull that up quickly.
It is in the condition section, and it derives from, everything within our ordinances or any town in May derive from the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan dictates that Kennebunkport, other communities can do differently.
It's a tree city, we've been reckoned, I heard the tree report.
We preserve the character of, of the town, that we, uh, know, uh, like the greenery and the wildlife and everything that goes with it, and as a result, we have in the ordinances that, you know, if you're gonna take down a tree of a certain size.
But, but where?
If it's in a resource protected area, there are.
So, chapter.
I have the shoreland exclude, I have the resource area, but a nine, a lot that is not subject to those ordinances, I, I agree with Peter, unless someone can show me, and I looked, and I couldn't find, now Kenny Bunk has a town policy that specifically talks about the maintenance of the, all of that, but where does it say that if I'm in, not in a shoreland zone and not in a resource zone, that I can't take all the trees off of my lot and put a lawn there?
Or where does it say that the, the planning board, if it doesn't like you, can, can tell you you can't?
Yeah.
So, so this is chapter two forty dash ten point eleven, this is in, this is conditions attached to site plan review, it's in your site plan review part of the land use ordinance, um, upon consideration of the factors listed above, which is just, you know, all the site plan stuff, the planning board may attach such conditions in addition to those required elsewhere in this chapter that it finds necessary to further the purposes of this chapter, violation of any of these conditions shall be a violation of this chapter. Such conditions may include, but are not limited to, specifications for type of vegetation, specified sewage disposal and water supply facilities, landscaping and planting screens, period of operation, operational controls, professional inspection and maintenance, sureties, deed restrictions, restrictive covenants, type of construction, or any other reasonable conditions necessary to fulfill the purposes of this chapter.
Well, I think that's, that's the key phrase there, is to fulfill the purposes of this chapter, and there's nothing in the chapter that I can find that says my purpose is to avoid cutting down specimen trees.
There are other ordinances that deal with landscape, right, that you need to have a lawn. You can't just build a new home and have dirt, you have to have a lawn or some sort of vegetation in place to hold the dirt, right, for drainage and sewage purposes. I don't, didn't see anywhere the word tree. So I guess if you say, well, landscape includes trees, and then we're gonna further attenuate that to say, well, that means we can dictate what trees stay and what trees go, but I don't, that's like a bridge too far legally, I think, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable.
So, 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 so let's bring it back, what, what about the possibility that the reason it's in there is for applications that have come to the planning board, and there's a whole host of reasons that some, some, like Mike's backyard wasn't required to come to the planning board, but, but others are. If, if you're at the point where it's gonna come to the planning board, there's going to be a public hearing, and this is one of the things that the public wants to know, regardless of the fact that the planning board can't stop it, they, they wanna know and just keep, keep your finger on the pulse of the town in terms of in these, in these particular cases, what's going on, just.
But that's a property owner's prerogative, I, I feel, and, and, and I, I could, I could say just to.
To do what, to do, to what, to, to?
Take the trees down.
That, that's right, I'm not, I'm not saying he can't, but he has to do it with public knowledge.
Okay, well, I don't know, does he?
That's, that's all, that's, that's what the requirement is, he has to do a tree survey.
Where does it say?
That, that, that's.
A tree survey is an application requirement.
Is an application, he has to submit it.
So the tree survey comes in, then it's us up to the planning board to determine how many of the trees they.
No, no, it's just to make that public.
Oh, okay.
This is what I'm saying, that's all I can.
I'm fine with the survey.
A budding neighbors can come and say, it's gonna change the entire character of the neighborhood, we're gonna have this one block that's now gonna have no trees, and everybody else has lots of trees.
It might, but, but the only purpose that I can find to having that tree survey, having done, Joe, what you said, looked extensively for some teeth that said, don't do it, is, is to put it in the public view. And, and if the public doesn't need that, we don't want that, then the next revision of the, the land use ordinance can remove that requirement. But, but I'm having trouble, I'm struggling with an applicant's request to waive it, on the heels of me just asking the Langsford, uh, not the Langsford, the Landen Woods people to, to go out and, uh, put their arms around trees and, and, and to do it by hand, because I didn't want them to spend a lot of money doing it. But, but I didn't say, oh, no, we're gonna let you cut down whatever you want anyway. I said, no, you, you need to make it public, what you're doing here.
Yeah, but I, I get, I agree, and look, I'm not a clear-cut the world, for, I love trees, for the record, I love tree, I love all names, I love all.
I know. No one's arguing that.
But I'm, as a practical public servant here, what is the utility of adding cost, especially to the low-cost housing, affordable housing, five oh one, that's a town-supported.
Right.
Uh, charity, i- if, if there is no, if you're never gonna u- use that survey to say, we're gonna forbid you to cut down these many trees.
Because maybe it would have just enlightened them, oh, gosh, I didn't realize.
Whether or not you use that survey information is the prerogative of the planning board, so just because the planning board, I would say never, and my, that, you know, albeit limited experience has said, we see the tree survey, we see these couple of trees, and we insist that you preserve them, it is an option that the planning board has. So what I'm hearing as an argument is why do we ask for this survey if we don't do anything with it?
Why do we even wanna look?
You can do something with it if you deem it necessary, so if you, if we get a subdivision application and they've built their whole road exactly on the path of several, you know, fifty-inch DBH trees, you can say, this is ridiculous, you can't put your road here, you've cut down every single large specimen tree on your lot in order to put this road here, so that's.
This hap- this applicant though is, is, I'm pointing at Mike here, from, from the last meeting, he's saying was, this isn't a subdivision.
Sure, and that, that would be. That would be a ridiculous situation to, to be in.
But what he's got is a thousand-foot road that's, uh, twenty feet wide, and I'm thinking to myself, well, how hard is it for him to go through and say, I've got this many trees that are, that are bigger than twenty-one inches?
Twenty thousand square feet, that he has to cover, she has to cover twenty thousand square feet of territory, counting trees.
Half, have, almost half an acre.
I think, yeah, I think that's a pretty onerous cost, frankly.
Yeah.
And the, sort of, as a practical matter, if you've never prohibited anybody from doing it, you've never said, don't cut these trees down.
Oh, we, we, we have had this discussion on subdivisions, but, but he, he's making a case that this isn't a subdivision.
Right, it's a driveway, right, so he has.
We certainly have done some changes in layout and lot lines and et cetera to avoid cutting some big trees.
We prohibited a parking lot and had to re-change the design at the old main state inn, they call it something that I can't pronounce now. And they, uh, they wanted the parking lot over on the side.
He's right.
And there was an elm tree, and the elm tree, uh, its root system was within the confines of that parking lot, so they had to change the entire design. And the parking lot was in the center, they're gonna have fire pits, that was a whole nother problem, and, uh, but the tree and the tree warden who, uh, came to the public hearing, John Ripton, uh, changed the course of that entire project.
There, there are cases where it has, it has mattered, whether or not if push came to shove, this would have gone through, it didn't have to.
Did, does this object the, the town to liability, I mean, what if that elm tree fell over and crashed into the house?
It got hit by lightning and, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I mean, a- and, and it, are, are we subjecting ourselves to a suit, was, I, I wanted to get rid of that damn tree and you wouldn't let me, and therefore this is your fault?
I think if the, so someone could come to the code enforcement.
It didn't come, it didn't come to that.
No, it didn't come to that, it could come to that, but, conceivably?
But I think that so, an applicant could say to you, this, we have this large specimen tree, this is the shape that it's in, and, you know, provide, if, if they're concerned about the safety of the tree, can provide the.
If it gets hit by lightning, it could be the safest tree in the world that gets hit by lightning.
At the lodge out front, we had a tree that we wanted to remove, it was a big one in town, and the tree person came out and agreed to us it was a hazard, we cut it down.
Yeah.
And that, so if, if you are worried about a tree, there is a process and a mechanism, even a listed tree, to get it taken down.
There was no in- indication in the discussions that George just alluded to, or that, you know, that, that, that there was a concern for liability or safety or. I mean, I thought we, we went into it with our eyes open, and I think we need to continue to do that, to be thoughtful and open. What, what, what we're dealing with here is we have an existing requirement, the people submit a tree survey, we've got an applicant who says, in this case, there, there's only one place where that road can go. Can I, can I avoid it, and I'm, I'm struggling with, can we avoid it?
And it is a waiver that you are allowed to grant.
The board has the discretion to waive.
It's a submission requirement, it's not a separate land use.
Mike's trying to get a word.
Is, is a tree survey what, what encompasses and who does a defined product? It, land in, trust, we had a person go out.
It's just, it's, 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 identify.
Identify.
Where they are and what their size is.
So, as far as a burden, it's not going out and getting a tree specialist or whatever to do that. And so it could be, to do twenty thousand square feet, I could say I could identify the trees in that easily in an afternoon.
I, I thought I could, but.
Not praising them exactly, but to say, in the construction of this roadway, we're gonna take out five trees that meet this criteria.
And if, if you'll remember, if you'll remember the Adele's, the Adele's way people.
That's what I'm looking for. Yes.
Been pointed on the site plan, of here it is, here it is, here it is, and that, but.
We didn't ask for that.
Yeah, but within the traffic, the easement, there is gonna be these number of trees meeting that criteria that will need to be cut.
I, I, I would offer that, but I think the applicant would say, I can do that, but it's still wasted energy, there's no other place where that road can go. Why are you asking me for it? And, and I'm struggling with that a little bit.
If you have made decisions as a planning board based on the tree survey in the past, right?
We have.
You know, you all have the advantage that Peter and I both don't have, is that you've seen many, many of these applications.
Not, not in one like this, though, that's so constrained.
Right. Right, but i- if in fact that's a consideration and decisions have been made based on the tree survey, then I, i- in order to, I, I think then the board just needs to use its discretion, we- to grant a waiver, because unless you wanna go and change the ordinance and say, we're just gonna include the tree restrictions within the penumbra of, you know, the dock square or something, because that's where, but I, I, I'm just split because between, um, the idea that if and I guess it's a little different, i- if you don't require a planning board approval, and you just are a landowner, then you can basically cut down at all the trees you like, right, there's no.
As long as your HOA isn't, you know, gonna come after you for civil damages or whatever.
I mean, is that true, Nadia, or is there any?
Yeah, as long as you're outside the protected zones.
Right, right, so.
Yeah.
In a way, it seems like a bit of a double standard, I guess, that, you know, I, I.
Oh, it is.
A lot of the things in the subdivision regs are double standard.
This isn't even subdivision regs, this is in.
Yeah. Now subdivision, I'm clearly, I clearly see the need for it in the subdivision context, because you're talking about a big development, right? You're talking, you, you know, I have a problem.
And some latitude.
Right, I have a problem with, I just bought this lot and, uh, house, and I wanna cut down some trees so my kids can have a fenced yard or something like that, I, that, but again, if you're not in the re- the shoreland zone or a resource zone, you have the right to do that, so. Then, you know, if it's not broken, don't fix it maybe, right?
May- maybe, you know, maybe we've, we've done all we can here, um, we've sort of, we've voiced our concerns, I, I think I'd be ready to at least have the vote, the, the board vote on whether we wanted to waive this requirement for, for the particular applicant who was here, um, two weeks ago.
Because there's nowhere else the road, the dr- the driveway.
That's his argument, that's his argument.
Vernal pools are on one side and the protected cordises are on the other.
For me, I could make them change the road, and then to avoid hitting the trees, and then, oh, I'm away from the mic.
Oh, you are so far away from Mike.
I could, I, I could have them, I just saw that look.
You even get two.
It didn't help, um, but we've made him change the pathway of the road.
Yeah.
To avoid the trees, and then two years from now, they go back in to develop the houses, and they cut all the trees down to put the houses on the building line.
Right, or, and in this particular case, you're gonna, you're gonna say the road is gonna start infringing more on wetlands and vernal pools, and you've got all these other constraints.
Yeah, and, yeah, but even. Even if we curved it and did this to avoid the trees, then that's where the house is going, or the driveway, or the.
Vernal pool.
Or, or that's where the septic system's going, bam, tree's gone. And, and so I don't, I don't know.
I just don't wanna set, I don't wanna set a precedent that says, if you ask nicely, we're not gonna make you do a tree survey, ever, because we, we don't, we don't like to.
No.
Say no, I, I, I do think that the situat- that, that, there could be an argument, is what I'm hearing, that would persuade us that, uh, it's not necessary in this particular case.
I think that's within the discretion of the board, right, to vote and make that decision, I, I fully support that.
I think we did what we, we said we were gonna do. There's, uh, there, there's a couple of other actions, I know we're, we're getting on here, I'll just mention them at least. One is, we said we would go through section ten.
Yeah.
And, and look at it, I, I know I did, did people get a chance to do that, refresh yourself?
I learned stuff.
Let's do that again for, 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 for next one, and I learned some stuff too, I think I learned to appreciate why we've been being asked to put things in for conditions and to grant waivers where we never even talked about a waiver before. I'm, I'm coming though, and, and Nadia, maybe you could take, take this back, to think that a checklist based on that section ten six, the submission requirements, might should, might would be very useful to be added as a second sheet, a third sheet, to the standard application. And then we would see, before it came to the board, that the applicant has said, yes, I, I have done this, or I have done that, and, and these are the ones I wanna waiver for. There's some applicants that have been do- doing a great job, I know Werner Gilliam and, and, and his crew came in, and the one we had today had a very thorough job, but not, that's not uniformly done, and we might think about revising our standard application form.
I totally agree with that, I mean, that's a nice template that he gave on that square footage calculation.
Yes.
We could use something like that, it, to, to attach and have people fill out.
So, so if you could talk about that a little bit and think about what you would want it to look like, and if you wanted one of us to propose such a thing, I think we could, we could accommodate that, or you, you may wanna hold the pen on that as well, so I.
I can, I can certainly bring it up to the department.
To yourself and talk about it.
I always have to ask about the height of the house.
Yeah, why?
Put the height of the house up, I'll say.
Yeah, it might not just be those submission requirements, there may be another.
Yeah. The one, uh, thing I wanna call yours, because I gave you that, uh, kind of format template, maybe for findings of, of fact, but.
I was just gonna get to that.
You know, that, I, item ten, those are all in the negative, and that, they're looking for no answers. Whereas whoever crafted the template for the findings of fact flipped them all, looking for yes answers.
And change, change them to letters instead of numbers and.
Yeah, that, that's right, because it, so, so what we're dealing with in the findings of fact isn't an exact replica of section ten. It's the converse, and in some cases, ors have been changed to ands in flipping it.
So you would, you would propose to make it look synonymous with, with the land use ordinance?
I proposed to make it look exact, absolutely, and, and having said that, it may confuse the daylights out of people when all of a sudden, instead of yes, 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 it's no, 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 no.
Well, I, I, I think we can do that with clear, with clear language, but I, I thought, you, you gave me a, a paper copy and I looked at it, and I, I have some comments and all of that, but I wondered if we, as a board, all should get an electronic copy of this, and maybe it could be put up on SharePoint, much as we did with the rules, where we could comment on it and, and then just talk it through and say, yeah, this, I like that, or.
Or the findings of fact or for chapter?
For the findings of fact, uh, proposed update that, uh.
I'm, I'm happy to do that, I, I would advocate that we change and have exact language from section ten, so there's no confusion.
Yeah, unless we can come up with a reason why we shouldn't.
Yeah, and then, and then the acceptable answer is na or no, instead of na or yes.
That's right, but, and, and make it, but make it usable for us, where the comment would still be easy to add and, and.
But, but I think a part of that is, is this other kind of checklist, expanding the checklist.
Two separate things, one is the submission requirements, the second is the decision.
Submission to.
Requirements.
Yeah, e- exactly, it, so it's all aligned, and, and, you know, Eric did a great job with this thing, I, I think somewhat coming off of the experience on Edgewood two weeks ago, right, I mean, he knows what we're looking for.
He's really been trying to, trying to satisfy us, and then we come up and say, what?
Yeah, but that was a good effort, I mean, first time around, that was.
Wonderful.
Listed all the waivers very clearly, I think, in the application, and it was, it was just good staff work, I was, it was good.
Yes, thoughtfully done, thoughtfully done. Alright, so, so if, if you, if the current one that you sent to me.
I'll do, I'll do that, I'll fix that, and then post it.
Send it to Nadia, and, and we'll get it posted, and you could send out something that says, okay, it's ready for you guys to.
Sure, absolutely.
Do, do your thing with, and, and not just us, yourself and, and Galen, and, and, uh, our select board, uh, person who's absent tonight.
I, yeah, he's on the SharePoint too, so he.
That's right, yeah. So, so tho- those were the three, uh, actions that I had, um, is there any other business for this evening?
Not from mine.
Then may I have a, a motion?
I'll move to adjourn, all second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, unanimous, to adjourn at eight ten. Thank you all.